Welcome. We have two public hearings tonight. We'll start with the public hearing number one. Proposal local law number six of the year 2022 amendment of Article three, increasing terms of council persons from two-year terms to four-year terms. Anybody like to speak to that? Say again for public hearing number one, proposal law number six of the year 2022 amendment Article three, increasing terms of council persons from two-year terms to four-year terms. Last call, proposal law number six of the year 2022 amendment of Article three, increasing terms of council persons from two-year terms to four-year terms. And we'll close that public hearing. Public hearing number two, proposal of the law number seven of the year 2022 amendment of Article four, increasing the term of mayor from two-year term to four-year term. And proposal of the law number seven of year 2022 amendment Article four, increasing the term of mayor from two-year term to four-year term. One more time, proposal of the law number seven of year 2022 amendment of Article four, increasing the term of mayor from two-year term to four-year term. We will close that public hearing. We'll call. Member Scott reported absent. Councilmember Silliman.
Present.
Councilmember Nello.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Here.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Present.
Councilmember Michaels.
Here.
You have a moment of silence for the suffering and homeless that we're. Privileges on the floor. Anybody sign up for privileges on the floor? Finance report. So. The. Department of Defense has started the budget process, so we've started reviewing the budget aspects of the. Reviewing what's to do. But the slate budget change this year will include their insurance and each department, which is not done in the past, also the capital budget, so capital budgets will be in there as well. From the now on, the financial report, we can read it. There are some big negatives in there, for example, maybe in the highway where we're pulling funds away to pay on a cliff app, but they'll be reimbursed in grants. But it does show those capital funds in that, and it shows a big negative, so that's why it's listed that way. So if those, those should be self-explanatory. The budget areas that I was, that are concerned, obviously, is insurance, which we continue to know and understand that that is a budget from three years ago. And payroll, obviously, TV is one of the effects that may change this year. There is a little bit of equipment here and there, the funding that's not done, that's. That's lagging behind, and some is ahead, so that's why some of those came. But overall, it's pretty reasonable. There is a packet that everybody can initial off on, sign off, but pay increases, it's being passed around, we did it at some point, just to show it before we're done. That is regarding mostly police. Previously, so that's. ARP funds, you know, I saw that at the local paper here, and there was some discussion on that. You know, it looks like. We'll have a full report done on that next meeting. That's being audited as we speak, and our decisions will have to be made for that rest of that funding money, and where that is being spent. It's like this about one, we just received another payment this month, I think it was on the. Sixteenth of this month, somewhere around there, that we received the second payment on, so we have all that funds in. Spent it to pay, I think there's 1.5 million left that is not spent out of that funds. But there'd be clarification on what those funds can be spent on, and what it hasn't been spent on, what's been allocated for. Some of the things are based on projects, so parks, let's say, it was a hundred twenty thousand dollars. There'll be a little more reform report from Andrea on the. Healthcare side to show what we're going to utilize that for in parks, make sure everybody's aware of that, and it's all clear, and we'll talk about the everybody who's at that time. As far as the ARP, the A, I have those numbers all done, if you would like, and I've shared, I'd like to share publicly too, I could do your what, like preliminarily, what's been spent?
No, no, no.
Just by time, timeline, the next meeting, we will have that progress. That'll be a discussion, I.
I would love to see what's been spent. That would be great to have all that together. Thank you.
Yes.
Something that the mayor didn't mention was that. Something the council didn't realize last year was that there were certain stipulations and guidelines that attached these funds. And we just kind of went hot wild and coming up with what we wanted to spend money on, but it's changed now. There are specific guidelines to be followed. We should know those by the next meeting.
That, that's what I, well, it's actually changed, so it's actually better. So some of the stuff they did approve wasn't legal then, but it's legal now. So that's kind of good news in some aspects, but there's a deadline of when the money's have to be spent, right? Yeah, you have to report it on and extend it.
That's what I said.
That's what I was saying, a vision. Yeah, this year. But we could extend that as long as we report. But some of the funds that I think give out will be back, so I'm not going to have that for that, but we'll. It becomes a little bit complicated, and so anyone dragged out too far, but it wasn't the paper.
Community aspect. It's good for the kids, it's good for him as well. He came from Holland. All the dogs are shipped from Europe to this kennel. And there's several instructors there that work with them. They're student trainers. It was a really good school. And I. It's going to be way back, it's going to be easy. It was far from that, but it was very rewarding, and I'm happy to be back and be able to work in the community with him and. Just enjoy the next, however many years I've got with him and make it the best, and I believe in him a lot, and I think he'll do good things.
I also believe.
He just turned one in July, July eleventh is his birthday, but he's still a puppy. He's still a puppy, and he's.
Down.
He, I was the smallest trainer or the handler, and he was the biggest dog, so we've had to.
For breaks, for puppy toes.
Yeah.
We're excited for him.
Thank you.
He gets the training.
Yeah.
At home, in our home turf, which is great.
Also, Drake, now, I know, because I went to court, there's, there's dogs in different disciplines. Now, he's a drug and police patrol dog, right?
Yes.
So he, he's for protection.
He's for protection, yep. Or he can also help people, or like vulnerable people, if say he's a vulnerable person with special needs or. And elderly person with like dementia and they wander, he's able to get on track and be able to possibly locate them. The only thing is with that, he would be wearing a muzzle, because he would not be able to. He just knows that tracking, end of the track is my reward. Usually, he just will think, oh, it's a suspect, I forgot, it's not. So he would have a muzzle in that situation where, you know, this person isn't. Getting injured, and he's not. Overexerting himself, he's doing the right thing.
What's his, what's his mix?
So I thought initially that he was a Shepherd-Mellon mix, but he's pure Belgian Mellow. Yep.
He's beautiful. Can take down groundhogs.
He loves birds, so when I was starting with the tracking training, he would always pick up his head and just watch the bird. Come to find out, I guess, a bird had flown in his kennel, and that bird passed away. He thought it was a special cause. But he loves birds, so at my house, he, when he's out in the kennel, he's just bird watching and loves it. But I don't know about groundhogs. He's curious of a lot of things, like when I take him for a walk, he hears a lot of new sounds and. Things he's really only known. Kind of life, if, like wind chimes, that's new to him. Things like that.
How was the adjustment going at home?
Really good. He, you know, I, because he is a puppy, he, it's, when he, I get him in my, in my room in my house, he just wants to run around. Everything's new to him, like I said, blankets, shoes, stuff like that, he just wants to pick everything up and fight it. So when he's, if he's ever inside, he's in his crate. If he's outside, he's in his kennel. If I'm with him outside, I'm always with him. But. House environment is, is brand new. Oh, it's his ball. Yeah. But. He's, he's a very happy boy.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me, so I think you guys could come see him.
Yeah. We're excited for both of you. I'm hearing good stories after, that's great.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you for coming. Chief Sandy, maybe we'll mention the funding sources and all that, because it's not easy to ask, it's all costly too, but it's a great investment for everybody, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Do you see a court?
Point.
Court, most.
I'll shoot great report, ask the first phase of state certification.
Awesome. Thank you.
Next year, we'll watch you at the download.
Yes, yeah, I'll be, I'll probably be going to Officer Bush's to just see what he does, what scenarios and stuff that he goes through, so I can make my downloads based off of this.
Thank you again.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Stay safe. Thank you.
Yeah, but it's pretty exciting stuff. It's great, great to have those opportunities. So, a couple other things that. Happened, there, there, I sent you all an email today, there's the parking. Division went out, so that study went out, that'll be a press release on Friday from the ADC. So that's kind of interesting to read that, at some point, we'll have to address some of those items. Was able to. It's kind of a unique thing that they had the ribbon cutting. House at the same time that Mr. Beckwith was able to. Do a time capsule, in the same gender of non-Red time period, it's kind of. To see the grease brown house being ribbon cutting at the same time that that was all that's been out, which is kind of. I'm excited to see the end of that, and to see a new time capsule that I didn't need.
Water timing.
Yes, so. You know, dealing with the homelessness and trying to come up with long-term and short-term solutions, we continue to deal with that with the DSS and other partners in the community, try to help, that's solution, folks, solution to that. Beechay Pipeline, I had a meeting again yesterday regarding Beechay Pipeline from the county, that grant went in. For on Friday, and Beechay Pipeline is. Arts and Wine Festival is Saturday, it's our sixth year at 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in the parking lot, behind the McNeil Building, so if you get a chance to go down to that, that would be helpful, that would be nice to do. Our students are coming back, so we have some of the athletes come back on the 11th, and I think it's the 25th and 26th, I think it's the dates that the search are coming back, so we expect. About 750 kids coming back on the 25th and 26th. So it's going to be heavy traffic and. A difficult time, and our construction, construction moving along, the gas companies down on this side of Main Street, getting closer and closer to the end by Tompkins, and for watching the grand finale is to do that intersection. Unfortunately, as of right now, it's kind of, guess what the date is? So we're hoping to get it a little forward, try to move something around, try to happen, but if not, you know, the day, we're trying to work out everything, to try to get everybody towards doing that. Towards getting the, move the traffic and try to get some of that stuff happening. If we have to ban people, then that's what we'll do. We'll try to get that as smooth as we can for everybody as they go. So, but, oh, and CCI opened in this week, so they're actually setting up on South Main, on the old Woodwire site, that's where they'll hold their equipment. And they're, they're getting set up and situated and started, so that's good news as well, so that'll be out of the way, so it'll be kind of helpful, so I would anticipate by the end of this winter. That all the construction pretty much look like what it is right now, so cut up, and blacktop back in, so we're not going to deal with dirt roads all over, it'd be kind of nice. Still not ideal, but, and then next spring, we'll jump right into it again. So that's the general plan, what I met with them the other day, that's kind of where that's going. Clinton Ave, obviously, that's still underway. Their Church Street had broken wire in the light, streetlights, so that will be back open tomorrow, I think they fixed those. Streetlight wires that broken, and then they're being, sort of big sewer name of water tie-in, which Water Manager now has up today officially. Now we've got to do the Star Green sewer, and tie that in over there, so that will be done. Again, go to the. Crown City Rising, that works too. CrownCityRising.com to get your construction updates, though. Mayor's, is that. Section looking like it might be done by the 22nd, 24th, I asked just because constituents and that, that's where. Travel better off, but.
Clinton on time.
Just, I'm just thinking of, you know, our, our workaround. Yeah, yeah, so unfortunately, if, if, if they're still in the middle of that area, so, remember, there's a lot, it's like a freeway of stuff. So if that's the case, then, you know, what I'm trying to do first is open up places, we have one lane opening, so we can bring all the college kids in that way up. That would be, that would be my second choice, my third choice. To send them down into your ward, so ideally, that's, that's our last resort, ideally, get them out of there, that would be the goal. That's number one, they can't get rid of that. But secondarily, I have a meeting this Friday again. Ask the construction team, that's one of the things, but there, I have my thoughts of today, they're going to work on trying to get that, that's. That would be, right. Ideally, we talk about DOT to try to get people to go up to the next exit. Well, the exit 12, they go across 281, go back into Columbus, that way. But unfortunately, most people, I'm afraid, just set the GPS, whatever that sign that links that says it, like if they're going to do it, they're going. Right.
Why you want a corner standard, or all day like they're used to?
Yeah, that's right. You're good at that traffic, so maybe we'll have to do that. But if we had to drag it down, Clint, then actually get them off the exit and say, get it. So we'll try to work that up. We have signs set up, we've turned out of signs, backup sites would be able to, so last resort, no guarantees at this point. So, just an update on the rental housing committee. So as of right now, I still need a couple names, if anybody can help, I have Beckwith, Silliman, I have homeowners on James. Need to clarify those, one of those names. I have two street landlords. And I have one other regular landlord, I'll take a name there if somebody has a suggestion. I want, I'd like to get a homeowner from the Maple Lincoln area. That goes over to crossover the wards over there, but I think it's mostly here. It'd be great to have somebody representing us there, just as from the. Yeah, homeowner that's representing that area, because there's not just doing housing over there, you know, there's other housing. It'd be great to have that intact. I have DSS representing. That's the, that's the idiot who will help kind of cover all those.
Well, zoning and codes.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, so Bob Ray will be there, so stamp, I'm sorry, Bob Ray, Roy Everett, obviously, Captain Everett, and AJ will be. So I talked to those three, so I need a regular landlord. I have one that's both, and I have two that are just students, so I'm trying to cover that other one. And a homeowner in that, in your area, you know. We have one from the other, so they're pretty, pretty broken.
Because I know some of them.
The timetable would be, you know. I'm trying to get it set up, you know, like early evening, so it's not too late, you know, like a four o'clock commitment somewhere in that vicinity, and I'll try to keep the meetings within an hour, so we try to come prepared. I have a pre-adj, then I want to get back it out, get through it, put, understand the study. I, I, I want to kick it up a little bit, I'd like to provide weekly, by weekly for a while, and then, because we really need to try to get this result. Sure. Anybody else? Have any others suggested? All right, so we have war reports. Mr. Scott isn't here, I won't jump out of order this time. Silliman.
I met with the town gown committee, we had a very productive meeting, we heard about plans for the moving dates and discussed traffic issues, and there were parents weekend plans. So it was, I think it was your second meeting. And it was my first time, and I thought it was going to be a very helpful committee, so I'm looking forward to that. I also met with Bob Ray about the zoning changes. The information that he sent us has a. A grid. And a table, and it. It's difficult to read, so he's going to redo that and send it to all of you. And we need to. Choose a percentage, because right now it says we're looking 10% parking, and we're talking about parking, sorry, parking changes. And so McKee and I discussed recommending 200%, and the county wants that recommendation, and we do vote on those changes. I planned to meet with Roy. Looking to meet with the mayor. I'm guessing that you might have a vacation on that, mayor?
Towards that move option.
Okay, so I'd like to meet with you before that takes place. I'll be meeting soon with the Parker Committee. Nick Doby was helpful addressing residents' concerns on Jewett Ave near Main, there are potholes to be filled, they were hoping to get it paid, but it's not on the paving schedule. Won't be next year either, but he did say he could take care of the potholes in the next couple of weeks. We are still waiting for parts for the street lamps on Westport near Pleasant, it's very dark if you're walking up there, please be careful, take a flashlight. There is a resident on Main Street near Dry Creek who's having trouble with carpenter ants and dead trees along the creek. Nick Doby said those trees are not a city. Because they're not something that the city would be taking care of, so I'm trying to source some good suggestions for her, lady on fixed budget, so if anybody knows of somebody who can take down trees. Is insured, has good prices, call me up, let me know, so I can pass along some information. I'm a resident who was concerned about taxi rates, he says they're inconsistent and they seem to be arbitrary. And I spoke to Chief Sandy about that. But for the past three or four years, the police no longer regulate the taxis in the city, and I've gotten, we voted on that, so. So I called 211, and if you're not familiar with the 211 resource in the city, it's great, you call them up, and they find county resources in Tompkins and Portland County. They can talk to about transportation, about food banks, about help with housing, all sorts of things. So I talked to them. And they got me information on the Portland Transit, which has a different website than what I find on people, so the website is waytoportland.org. And I don't know if we have a link on the city website, but I really think we should, because it was kind of hard to find.
Way number two.
Yes, way number two, goportland.org. And we agreed that they really had, should have printed routes. For people to find at City Hall, at the different drop-off points, at the grocery, because we have Portland, the city of Portland is, has quite a large population of over 60. And many people who don't use the computer or are uncomfortable with it, and they still need printed materials, so that would be. Let's see what else. There's a city resident who's happy that there's program to help with woodchucks, but she wanted to know if she could use somebody other than Sweeney's, and I said we would not reimburse her somebody other than Sweeney's, and explain why we have contracted them that they are licensed. She wanted to know if there could be a discount for the street, because she's having trouble talking people, other neighbors into investing in this. Road to eradication. And it's just really difficult, because they're, you know, the city just has two woodchucks per household, and if it turns out being 100 bucks per woodchuck. People out there greedy and greedy, and they don't respect property boundaries, so if you deal with yours and then your neighbors, you know, war come over, it's just very difficult. So I'm looking into electric fencing, I know two people who use electric fences, one here in Portland, one in Homer, and they have success, and I would just like to be able to. Suggest other options, so I want to talk to codes about electric fencing. If anybody else uses an electric fence for their garden, I'd be interested in talking to you about your success or failure with that. And. That's about it for me.
Just real quick, if you don't mind, I'm talking about the woodchuck perspective, one of the considerations that Captain Everett's looking into is maybe doing a. One of the considerations that Captain Everett's looking into is maybe doing a. Looking to do a contract that would be a citywide more eradication. Or address to discuss, you know, to try to bait them out. That was always the concern that we discussed, and we kind of put this together, is you want to do it. That one doesn't, so that. Then he goes over each of your garden, and then. So the idea would be to do eradication. So that's being reviewed as we speak. So the treaty will find it out. And talk to Captain Everett about trying to negotiate how that would look like and what that would take. Trying to study the problem and really try to come up with a solution. It's been so long, like you said, we keep, keep more and more coming, so.
My other suggestion is borrow your neighbor's big dog. We didn't have any, but we have a dog. The cats, they ignore woodchucks, but the dogs really.
Thank you.
So everything's quiet in the third ward. We're all good right now. I don't have anything this time.
Increase your population.
Pretty quiet in the fourth ward. Feeding Tompkins Street in and out. The city is. I feel it's getting worse, but it could be just still bad to begin with. I was asked if there could be a permanent sign. I know going into Freeville, there's a permanent sign that says, you know, how fast you're going. And it's not one of the portable ones, and it's always there and it tells you what. So people ask if, if there could be one of those as you're coming in to the city. A constituent would like to see once Main Street gets all settled, if there could be no bicycles at the sidewalk signs. I guess he has a problem when he's walking down there. Someone else wanted to see if we could get a fresh yellow crosswalk sign at Tompkins and Ashley. Like they have down in Weagle and Tosh, or Tompkins. We did have a town and town meeting that I thought went very well. I attended the Grace Brown ribbon cutting, that's an amazing building. Just simply amazing and unfortunately needed in Portland. Went to the Gutters groundbreaking, groundbreaking ceremony, which gets that facility. And we have a Parker School meeting coming up.
As far as Tompkins Street. You have to address some. We're still very back on the chart.
Yeah, you said.
Yeah, I might send another one to follow up on that. As far as the speeding and stuff, just a couple quick statistics. You know, the came out, the police report last month was, last year extended 666 arrests, now 2,000. And so speaking, it's a point your decision also was concerned that there was a point being center turning. It's concerned about. That's not, that's not different. It's scheduled to pay 2024. Try to get to that most of these changes. If they do the other changes, so they don't have to do it after. So I will pass that.
Ward five. Three things. Attend at the Grace Brown. Manette Ceremony. And sure. It's sad that we need that resource in our community, but to have the resource in our community. A good thing. Services are gonna be. Hopefully a benefit for those that, that do need that. Two, the Gutters Upper Project Expansion. Continue to be a good. A good thing for our communities. So hopefully it will continue to benefit some of the folks. The last thing, which is unfortunate in our ward. Mike reverse that we experienced last week. It certainly. It's been an impact close to home. And also. Further out within our ward, being up especially on top of the hill. Got a lot of trees down. People are, are traveling with getting things right. Or insurance, or their, their own mill. Our good folks checking in. Yeah. Pretty good to that. Thank goodness somebody really got hurt in the accident property, right? But that's.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Things been pretty quiet in six ward. I did have a call last week at Cornell Police where, as an alert call, that university. Apartment surrounding the dairy department showed up. So I saw Chief Reaven there, and the town chief there. It was great to see them in conjunction with all those other private departments. And we have that working relationship with this park and us too. So that's great to see them. They're too high. Too hard guys, and that's pretty cool. The only thing is, we finally got the speed zone changed. If this happened, a little history on that, this has been going on probably 30 years with Joe D'Asenza. I'll try to change this. DOT at the time never set for that for a minute, not for a minute. I first got elected in the sixth ward. Constituent was very upset over that speed zone being 40, too fast. Get the piercing home there. We had the school there, Osseous was outside our jurisdiction. How fast it would come into Portland. So today, finally, after a lot of work, we already, they changed the signs. It's 30 miles an hour, and it's also 40 miles an hour for Osseous. I left a message for Officer Ryan about the qualifications of Osseous, the principal there, so you know, they only. All saying is they're working on signing out mess, we can load the speed so everybody knows it's going up. So it's good. Yeah. Three years. Well, 20, you know, 30.
Just a couple things. Probably give the dates with the Brewers, for Tool, AIPAC, Ray, Monica, or. I know it's all three, so progress is gonna happen here soon, so. Over to that. And for the fire department, mayor's office, myself. I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna say it twice. I'm not pointing fingers. We need to address four Cleveland Street. The trash needs to be gone. Am I anybody that do their job? But the time has come, it's been longer. I got constituents down there building garages. 24/7, they're all back there. Doing the best we can. What's the point of looking at me like? But like the. I'm sure them that here won't be in due. Just a matter of sending somebody over to pick it up. You go over there, we took pictures. And unfortunately, it was a tragedy in their family, and I explained that, but you know, we all have. I'll go and clean it up. Give me permission. Won't cost you anything, because I'll take a truck over there tonight to get it done. Yeah, but it's, it's. I saw on the street.
Understood. So Rick, I just want to address that, recognize some of the complications to that, so that it's understood that. They had been in there for quite some time. Something that's been short, so it took us 30 days, we got them out of there. The rest of the methods that were way ahead of it. Landowners doing anything they could do it, she had taken their stuff, because she tried to clean up the inside. Hold their stuff, which is trash. And so that, so I know they're on top of it, I'm sure I know it's being addressed this week. And I'm sure. The tools. So is their start date? Was it a start date? It's been very difficult, complex, trying to get all that. landfill. landfill's mostly problems right now, they have, basically their salad is closing. So they get towards the top of it, they can only allow a certain amount a day. So their county has been very good, very good about working with us to get that in there. So that's all good stuff, so start seeing.
Just remind everybody, you know, it might have came down a little bit, but it won't disappear from here. Right, yeah. Unfortunately, but yeah.
Yeah, it's a. I believe it's a 13 day permit. We have to go through the special area quality, so. We only wait for now, they have to do their process, do the process. That'd be great to have that.
I still shadow the mayor around. All these meetings are sort of very interesting, and we do have meetings, so. Be patient, there's so many things. Two wood related items, I got the chicken permit, I still need to follow up on that. Some of my residents down in Don Drive, they're a little excited. The weeds and the grass were around the curbs. They, they thought that the super was gonna get paste, and I explained to them that, that, oh, it's just regular paint. The holes were up, but I certainly, it went down quick. But yeah, it's.
They'll be happy, they'll go back in nine weeks.
Yeah, yeah. Well, at some point, it'll be paid, but I'll be there for two years. Let's, that's all I have for my worst.
Approval events for July 19. Director. Now, questions? All those bigger.
I abstained.
Agenda item number one, authorize request for proposal for evaluation of health insurance programs. So this is to review all those, just send an RFP out as we discussed them last meeting. To look at that. While they're at it, I'd like to look at, because there's some quotes out there, just a brief one. I want to go real in depth, because we don't drive this any more especially. Just kind of give some brief overview on our health insurance follow-up.
Well, the county council does hereby authorize the issuance of a request for proposals for an independent consultant to evaluate and compare options for administration of the city's health insurance programs. And be it further resolved that such request for proposals, proposal and evaluation is solely for the administration of benefits. It is not intended to change contractual benefits provided to city employees. Councilmember Silman.
Aye.
Councilmember Pella.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Item number two, adoption of local law number six of the year 2022, amend that article three, taking term of councilperson. Two year term to four year term. Zob with the county council approves adoption of local law number six of 2022. Amending Article three, section C3C, group C3. Three, terms of councilpersons, changing terms from two years to four years, subject to approval by city voters at the general election on Tuesday, November 8, 2022. And be it further resolved that if approved, the term of office for a person elected councilperson for the city of Portland at the general election will be held on November 7, 2023. And that each election for said office thereafter shall be for a full four year term. Such four year term commence on January 1, 2024. Be it further resolved that the local law number six of 2022 shall read as follows. Now we review of that.
This, understood that this is, we'll have to change charter and make the recommendation on that. Afterward, this is just to push it, to let the public decide. I have just motions about it either way, because I think that's the same two years of something that one, right? But then, I also say that when I be working this hard, pushing this hard to try to make the agenda items happen. If I wasn't pushed through a two year term, so that could be a part of it. But then again, you know, I get just as much confidence. I don't know the answer to that question, I hope that my work ethic will stay. But, so I think, I just missed terms, so I think it's great to let everybody know. Make sure we get them all educated to do it, and they can study the benefits to do that, so.
I had, I had several people contact me, and they were not in support.
Oh, really?
And, and personally, I'm not in support of it. As a candidate, of course, you know, you don't think after. Do it every four years instead of every two. And I understand the reasoning behind, you know, not having enough time with a two year term, term to do something. But if you're good at what you do, you'll get reelected, and you'll have another two years anyway, and maybe another two after that. So the voters will decide.
That's the good part.
Right.
They have to do that discussion, argument. I honestly don't have a vote. See that, how I feel at the end. So, anybody else?
I haven't been for this anytime we had on the agenda. I think two years is a good amount of time for people to get started. And if the public like what you're doing, they'll approach it, and. Four years can be a very long time. That's been my stance. My constituents had some. Asked me to vote otherwise, and so I'll be voting against it tonight as well.
I think everybody, I think most cities are four years, Kansas four years. I think it's time to move on, I think that's the, I mean, I've had issues that, doesn't mean I'm a bad counselor, it's just getting things done. There's a lot, it's really hard, especially with traffic. You know, with traffic, the speed signs. When I was in the third ward, you know, wire issues on the high school loop, you know, it took me four years to do that. It's just, you know, you get started, and all of a sudden, you, you get loaded out, and you don't, you don't, and all of a sudden. Drops the ball, and that's how I, four years is good.
To add to that. Literally one year.
Yeah.
That you're, you're in office one year, and before you know it, you're, you have to start campaigning again. Which actually takes away, detracts from what you can actually provide as far as effort towards, towards the city. That's another, I think, compelling part. And in the work world, there's that saying, you need three years to actually start changing your job. First year, you're learning your job, the second year, you're starting to do your job, the third year, you're actually changing and getting things done that are different functions for the benefit. So, you know, are they, are they comparable? I definitely see some benefits for the folks to have a little bit more jeopardy. And the people that still have a more sacrifice four years. Yeah, I was talking to a staff member today that was discussing it. Their pros and cons, we're trying to weigh that out, and when I was talking to that staff, everybody knows. Like the figure, say this budget is imperative this year. And it's spent crazy, and turn around next year and say, I'm gonna do a 10% tax decrease. To see reelection, I guess I have to do it the next time, right? But, but that point, it's, I think, so I think there's pros and cons for sure, right?
I think those are great arguments and great discussions to have. Hopefully, there'll be more debate publicly about it, maybe more discussion, so that people make it educated. I see, definitely see benefits for the chances that next year. You know, how really, how much we get, is it gonna get silly here, or get silly election stuff, or we get something done? And that's what I, impressive, being proactive on a lot of things, I'd like to keep that method going, not get.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Pelle.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Yes.
Councilmember Michaels.
Yeah.
Will decide.
It's why attribute justice, yes. Just get it to a full, let them decide.
Then item number three, adoption of local law number seven of twenty twenty-two, amendment of article four, increasing the term of mayor for a two-year term to a four-year term.
Resolved that the county council approved adoption of local law number seven of twenty twenty-two, amending article four, section C four-one, B, term qualifications, changing the term of mayor from two years to four years, subject to approval by city voters at the general election on Tuesday, November eighth, two thousand twenty-two. And be it further resolved that it approved the term of office for a person elected mayor for the city of Portland that the general election will be held on November seventh, twenty twenty-three. And that each election for said office thereafter shall be for a whole four-year term. With such four-year term commencing January first, twenty twenty-four. Be it further resolved that local law number seven of two thousand twenty-two shall read as follows.
I move.
Second, Mr. Carter. Are you getting the same thing? Anybody else want to add?
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Pelle.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Yeah.
Councilmember Michaels.
Yes.
Then item number four, cancel August sixteen, twenty twenty-two, county council meeting.
Resolved that the county council does hereby cancel the county council meeting scheduled for August sixteen, twenty twenty-two. Be it further resolved that the city clerks will publish public notice of this cancellation in newspapers and on the city website.
Beckwith, Mr. Carter. Sure. We have a length agenda item to spot, and I don't see any project to come up that much and get away from it.
Okay.
Certainly, does that, does that American, right?
Again.
Right.
If we have quick meeting time, it's just two agenda items.
Yeah, I think that we should do it, I think we should have, we think, oh, the clerk will be up, I can't. Are you going together? That is none of our business.
Thank you, no. Get out of this world. That's the idea, sorry, sorry.
Never the best. I think we could manage and it's consistency. It would give Tom shot it, doing his job, even if we have a couple of agenda items. Where's the party happening?
I think if we don't have the clerk here, one, there, I think we should, uh, first one.
Kind of say, we have a definite.
No, I mean, somebody, we could put somebody else, sure, but, you know, I just, I think about sensitive to staff time, I'm sensitive to all that time. And that's very frustrating to do that.
Yeah, I think you just got invited to vacation, dudes, on the entry.
Yeah, so that, that's the idea.
No, I, 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 I leave town, uh, in Russia sometime, so. May follow it, eventually.
There was something pressing, I was certainly scared. Anybody else?
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Pell.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Yes.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Item number five, approval assumption of micro enterprise grant obligations of Tommy Dammers. Firepress restaurant by, well, L L C, D B A Los Logos Restaurant, which is brought that.
Resolved that the city's county council does hereby approve the transfer of all community development block grant funded equipment and other items purchased with the micro enterprise assistance program funds by Tommy Dammers, D B A Firepress Restaurant to Caballo LLC, D B A Los Logos Restaurant. The return for Caballo's assumption of the community development block grant obligations, including execution of a deferred payment loan agreement with the city. Be it further resolved, Mayor Scott Steeble requests approval of said transfer from the micro enterprise assistance program funding source, the New York State Office of Community Renewal, as well as requesting that office waive the training requirement for the micro enterprise program in consideration of Andrew and Elizabeth Fox's years of experience operating similar venture in the city of Portland.
Motion. Now, Ms. Lane. Yeah, so this is equipment that was left, that was relatively new and the other one, you're got, we're victims of COVID. Not difficult to run the business, so this is the assumption of that equipment. New owners of that establishment, which is very good, by the way, if you get a chance to try it.
Is there, just FYI, doesn't, but it should be, assuming there's gonna be a cash listed, but.
There, there is a listing of equipment that's signed up with the state right, so.
I, I've been through this before and all of a sudden, there's no list and then, I guess, I guess. Or protect these people, I guess, is what I'm getting at.
We have that list, I think.
Throw a number on there, but it could be one of these, or it could be three hundred.
That's actually, uh, late, by the sitting with U C C. Please attach to the Apple check and send to you if you want.
We have serial numbers.
Okay. No, I'm just making sure that everybody understands what's going on here.
Yeah, that's cool.
We're not being in the property, we're doing equipment.
Prior to the start of August, Karen and I, they, the D B C went in with new orders to do it. To compare to the list that is attached to the U C C filing. Circle one, which is.
I have a lot of time to look, seeing who else, but it's gone, right? But we have some lists, I just.
When you, when you say return, return for service or return back to the property?
It was a very small item that, uh, wasn't, was on the list, wasn't there. And kind of thought it was something she had purchased with her own.
Okay.
So she just returned it.
But that was a return.
Wait, I didn't know if you meant return warranty or return to.
So everything is accounted for and just. Yeah, it's a good one, a good problem.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Pelle.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Then item number six, authorized letter of support for McNeil Development Company funding application.
Resolved that the county council does hereby authorize the mayor to submit a letter in support of McNeil Development Company's application for funding through the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Free Infrastructure Brand Initiative for the Sustainable Reconstruction of Parking Lots in Downtown Portland.
Yeah, so this is for what they're doing in the back parking lot areas to replace construction, so hopefully they'll get some money back. Person self for his project. Questions?
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Pelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Then item number seven, authorized request for proposal for stormwater mitigation study.
Resolved that the county council authorizes the issuance of a request for proposals for an engineering report which will address the Hickory Park, Hellaw, Road, and Forest Avenue areas. It included description of the problem and evaluation of the existing conditions, recommendations for potential engineering solutions, budgetary project cost estimates, and potential funding sources.
I will.
Mr. Pelle, Mr. Carpenter. Oh, this has been, I think, Mr. Carpenter's list, I was trying to give it to you.
Yes.
Sorry. Yeah, it is, it's just, it covers both of you and, and, so it actually.
My area as well.
Yes.
Yeah.
So there's, there's been continuing issues that you've all brought up.
It doesn't go through the mine?
It doesn't.
No, I'm just busting out at this. No, he says his, times his, but not me mentioning mine. But then I'm in the middle of nothing.
It occurs to me that Clayton has, has issues as well. Maybe not as severe, but Upper Clayton has real issues with storm water runoff, especially at the corner of Pleasant and Placing.
My, my understanding of that situation is. Is that there's a spring. Still find hard to believe with that much water coming out of that, the such damage.
I just wondered.
So they're looking to do some exploratory to do that, but this, this, this particular work is pretty intensive. Like, these are pretty big areas to do, but that's something we can look at doing, without having to go further. But these areas are in dire need and flooding is happening in people's homes, which is. Not that that's not, not that the one's not on.
I appreciate that.
James Street too, very similar situation on James, which I think we had that fixed. But that's, that's something we've been talking about to address, but this one is identified in the funding. And there's actually, I think there's, we have a good opportunity to have a grant lineup for these projects, these school projects that are talking. All those are concerned. I'm sure we can probably find other areas and other systems too. Those are areas that were, when they were originally built, they were never designed to have stormwater management, should have been done properly. So this, I think there might be some relatively easy solution on some of these, so. But so that would be great, but that one is under the radar and we've worked on it as a discussion, because I saw that bill there.
Yeah.
Does make sense.
It doesn't.
Right? It's probable that there is. Right, ask, anybody else?
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Pelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Then number eight, authorized memorandum of understanding with the city of Portland Police Department relating to coordination of law enforcement efforts.
Resolved that the county council does hereby authorize the mayor and the police chief to execute memorandum of understanding with the city of Portland Police Department relating to coordination of law enforcement efforts.
And so in their discussion, I had a meeting at the, uh, artwork, the facilities. So there's gonna be several other M L U's, probably go blanket M L U with the college, because we have a lot of different areas that we've been working on that we haven't been doing. And I, M L U's in the past, there's one that the T P W does with that, and maybe with us, we'll talk about that in your section, light at the bottom of the hill. So that, all those kind of things, so we're trying to talk, but this is one that we can work on, so we can talk about for task force and some of the other issues. Situations. Questions?
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Pell.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Uh, discussion items, Parker School ad hoc planning committee.
We can turn it up, I believe, nine. Should have the information about the updated costs for the project. But that in discussion, and you sent all of us these documents, you asked me, there is money, there's a grant for a position to steer all this through. I think that we need to address that, we need to discuss that at this next meeting.
So there's not a grant, it's a, there's money that was allocated to, uh, the Y W capo, I'm not sure which, maybe just. The neighbors told, but it was one of the two from the county, they use their air and money, it's one of their positions to do that. And in my earlier negotiations with them, they wanted to, uh, get that position and create a job description, which is where we started, because that was the plan. But then they wanted it to drive it to the mayor's office, respond back, mayor's office would be driving that. So we created, because I couldn't take that with mainstream construction and all that. So that's why, so, but that money is not a grant, it's actually there, it's air people, it's what has been utilized. I think it's for, it was, I think it was utilized for management of that facility, like, actually receptionist to be a head job, is what I remember. But do you can clarify that?
Yes.
They did the application.
Thank you.
This, I can't be sure. Trash and recycling, the ad hoc advisory committee. Speak to that, that was at that meeting. Do you want to talk about that or? Pretty much.
Probably the last one.
Okay, so we're still at the same spot there. Down, down, ad hoc planning committee meeting, uh, talked about that a little bit. At least the athletes, students come back eleven at the twenty-five, twenty-six. The rest are coming, it's very beneficial, uh, the police department is working on a, uh, neighbor to neighbor rewrite that document. So that's how, uh, we're talking about, hit it again, how we can get more interaction into the city and the community. So, uh, all good stuff, I think that's very positive. Director of Administration and Finance position, uh, so that, the executive committee, I was speaking to that. The document was released, so the idea is, uh, this is city manager, so what I think would be a nice process to do maybe is, uh, city managers change the chart. So a little bit different, so we have, we have a great finance team downstairs and with some direction on us. The difference is, city manager would be more of dealing with the day-to-day issues instead of what we call the governmental world, the strong mayor, form of government. So the department would actually be the boss and the city manager, we give the directions to the city manager and they follow through with them. Their experience in negotiations, their experience in all the other handlings of day-to-day business.
H R.
H R. Contract negotiations, almost. Those would be the idea of doing that, so it's a little bit change of form of government, it would be a change in our local law. So as an educational process, this is basically what their jobs be, if you compare that on the charter to what the finances, what the finance, basically the charge of finance, there's some loopholes and some problems in that, as far as I'm concerned, from what I sit, watching it day-to-day, I don't want to pick on anybody, this is a difficult, this would guarantee some kind of continuity down long-term, down the long roads of doing it, uh, kind of similar what we did at the county eighteen plus years ago. Put administrator in there so they keep that continuity and doing that, and there's good success to that, and the tax rates have been somewhat managed. So what I'd like to do, and the council's doing, so this is the first discussion area at time of it, I could ask the Corning uh, city manager to come to our meeting and make a presentation in our next meeting. And, uh, you could bring somebody, city managers as a group, that's like, kind of like your council mayors, as a manager group, uh, that are city managers. And they're all professionals to do that, uh, and they rely on each other, gives that information back and forth to each other as to not reinvent the wheel. So I'd like to offer that, and their council is interested in our Grace Brown House, I believe they're looking at the same thing. And some of our, uh, other, so, so it sounds like their council might be coming, so if their council were still then come, I will write an invitation to everyone here. And, and based on response, if everybody decides come, I upload the media now. But I'd like, they're gonna, they'd like to do a tour of the Grace Brown House and the Horizons Project, looking at what they've done or envisioned. So it's great that people are supposed to hear the movement that we have, but I'd like to have him come, that's what the desire would be, just basically ask questions. So you'd ask, how it works, how's your interaction, I'd be, you know, how, how did that happen? How does that political, you know, get general, how does that all work out? So I think it'd be helpful, and I, we spoke at the ICOM meeting, uh, when I was at one time, very knowledgeable and. Harvard does similar and make sure that. But then, there doesn't mean that there's an elimination of the mayor's position. But it doesn't mean that there's an elimination of the mayor's position, you're just. Somebody understands that.
Right.
Yeah, with point, yeah, who can, that doesn't feel right. So the priority of the mayor and the council is still remains the same, it's just an issue. This is an assurance that I would feel comfortable with having a four-year term where you have some continuity. And the argument would be at the four-year term, you split the council, you have four this two-year period, and four the next two-year period, you know, so you have some kind of support, I mean, you know, fortunately, we had four that stayed, and we had four, four that. That's good in both of those, right? So that's, that's a perfect world, but if that happened every time, I guess, that'd be a improvement, but if it happened, but on six or eight, changed, could be some concern, you know what I mean, because they're all trying to, so that's something to think about based on what that election results are, which we wouldn't have a lot of time, so.
And the city manager, we would, the common council and mayor oversee the city manager. He or she does not work independently, they work, and can do what we want them to do, whatever policies we enact, whatever laws we enact, they have to act on, and they have to, and it's just a regular position, evaluation, supervision, et cetera, so. And, and as we, you know, we're looking to move the city in a different direction and move it forward, this would be a chance to, uh, to do that, to have this position as city manager as opposed to the old Director of Administration of Finance, and the city manager still would do the finances, do the reports, do the, the, all the state and federal reports, work with the Comptroller's Office, it's not going to be any different in this.
I have a couple of questions. Where it says city manager's educational qualifications. Shouldn't it say, I don't know, a bachelor's degree, or at least a four-year degree, and why criminology, why public safety?
Again, uh, they include that, it says may include that, and this is not necessarily, uh, you know, when we, when you finish the job description, you would finet that, and make those fine.
All right, so those changes would be.
Yeah, this is, this is just more like this beginning of what the educational piece of what they would look like, this is not something you would formally set out as a, as a, as a job.
Again, why criminology?
That's what's recommended, yeah, this is taken, yeah. Criminology, criminology, I'll tell you what, I, I gotta tell you this right now, and Mayor Walsh had talked about surgeons, same thing, we spend more time on our police department than any other department, and probably most of them. So, so I could see where I said.
So I could, I could sort of understand that, I know that, um, but, um, public safety, but I guess my question is, you know, would public administration also be prudent, agree to have in here as.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. The master's in public administration.
It means it says include, it, it's one of the main things, we have the experience as public administrators, we wind up the experience in that.
Right.
But there's actually the free programs for public administration, civic planning, so forth, um, globally. Davidson University's one, Albany. So we have resources within New York State that where folks can draw from, to public administration background, that potentially be served, or some of this information came.
Because I've already reached out to them.
I mean, according to the website, the county website, even though it's not a civil service position, um, you know, they, they have like graduation from New York State Registered, originally accredited university or college with a bachelor's degree in economics, accounting, management, public administration, or related field, and five years management experience in the public and private sector, so it's, that's going to be in there.
I think if you had that, if you, if you were the prior public administrator.
Yeah, yeah. I like the idea of having the guests come. And maybe you could see what they have. That's one.
Yeah, we did discuss that with them, especially to file what's, you know, specific job description, I didn't ask for that, to, to use them, I just spoke to them. So, but yes, so it'd be a great, it'd be great to have that information, and you can talk about the association of other managers and things, I think it's the best tool, and I can try to be it, because I learned from it, but it'd be better if you guys here ask your questions.
I've read this manager's resume, uh, of course, very impressive. He's a good deal.
Try it. He's very, now, very content, it was. For us, I don't know, a big corner. So that's the idea, that's a concept, so if everybody's on that same method, then go, by process would be, have them committed, and educate, do that, if any other questions between now and then, obviously we'll send that through, obviously work on those little details, that you mentioned, that are important details. That's, and then try to get, then we'll bring together a job description, real job description of what that could look like, make that, and then bring that draft to the next meeting, which I think is almost, is about anything that they can all, it's written out, so bring that to the next meeting, that draft will be reviewed, this is an educational reason, then we give them a draft meeting with them, speaking, and the next meeting, I'd like to put it on the agenda in a public hearing, so we get that position to.
They posted it.
So that's the plan, if anybody has any questions. Send an email, and I'll answer them, and we'll get them all, and make sure to answer those questions in public next time. Any other, anything else to add?
A question about the Portland stage.
Portland stage, correct, um, so we did get, so far we have a donation for the Portland stage at Hell Rock, our Portland stage, I think we want to use some of the A R P money to pump the balance of that Portland stage, we have interest from Portlandville, um, Virgil, Palmer, um, some other municipalities that would like to go in, uh, you know, find effort to try to, like, together, and be able to have that, so working out those details on how that would work, and how that, who would pay, so that part of it, but when we make the proposal for the A R P, that would be, times, make that, there's no way to get that stage in time. Like, this, this stage is, we have another, two more concert series, after that second concert series, we're gonna take down the stage at the park, for safety reasons, remove that from the grass park, get that out, and the Portland stage will be there, hopefully, if you guys will, if you don't, then. But I think it would be great to have that, thanks for bringing that.
What would the Portland stage look like? In what way is it portable?
So it's portable, it pulls behind in a trailer, and it has.
Like a flatbed?
Yeah, kind of, but it's, it's hydraulic arms that open up, it's pretty, pretty.
Like a showmobile.
Well, it kind of like showmobile, but yeah, it's open in the back, but it has its awning type loop, but you push buttons in it all, that's a little oversimplifying it, but, yeah, but they.
Like some Arby's.
It's like an open arm. Yeah, it's like, that's a quick, but open Arby, lamp here comes down, and then it's pretty decent size, and then you know. Yeah, that worked really well.
If I was a kid, it's a little shit. Or, or didn't know, but if they want to.
I believe, I believe that it's up for auction, I think it's not here, but I believe that's up for auction, so we can make that nostalgia, you can do backyard, like.
Yeah.
But yeah, it, uh, but honestly, I see a point, something, like, for, but it'd be kind of great that you have to set up at Courthouse Park on weekends, or do a, I think on Central Lab, or moving over, or do something, you know, when they have reunions, to do something.
Is there a thought about the music services that would, uh, see, partner on that? They would move that back, yeah, but that was.
That was, yeah, well, the music series is going on, I'm doing it in Rose Hall, and I've taken a lot of panels about that, and, uh, and I, you know, and they made that decision, I respect that decision, because, you know, it's tough, especially to begin, I think when they had to make that decision, it was early on, you weren't sure which is, which way to focus, because I get that, and, and it's been some, you know, it's been pretty successful, unfortunately, it's been beautiful, every night that they've had, and I've gone over to a couple, you know, it's warm in there, it's nice, but it's a very good venue to have it, love to see that continue over there, but I'd like it to be summer, some of the funding we're using to get promotional downtown, we're gonna use to get some more bands there, I'm just grateful, it's crazy, like, that's one thing I noticed in the community that Portland is using, using, so we're thinking about all these, the history's up there, and they have local recipients, and so, so grand, it's local too, kind of needs that, but I can't do it, and I love listening to what I think, great, but I don't do that, but get back to that, absolutely, and I'd like to see that venue being moved around, so that's the idea of the Portland stage, it can do it, we talked about, like, a battle of the bands kind of thing, maybe they play up at Virgil, and then they come down, Palmer, you know, I think it'd be very great for the community to roll.
And that, Tommy was willing to get that, uh, A Street, there was tons of people, it's Friday, like, whenever they go there, they're just going, you know, it's really nice, it's not, they call us beer, but, yeah, really good.
Yeah, so hopefully get some more of that stuff coming, and I think we can get more now than ever, but it's just a matter of getting out of that COVID ship. Yeah. Being locked in and getting out, so that, someone, don't forget the White Castle this weekend, that'd be a good opening, but I don't, I don't know if that's not a bad venue spot either, or Central, parking lot's pretty big, I'll be curious to see how that turns out. Right, anything else, anybody else? All right, so we, for, so, back with, most favor?
Aye.